I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, we had an executive session meeting regarding matters on real estate and actually follow-up on litigation now pending in federal court. We have next on the agenda, a presentation on the Pebble Ridge-Woodridge Sewer Project. Mr. Butler from the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authorities here.
I'm going to slide this a little closer.
Do you need a mic on your lapel?
I think I'm okay. Can everybody hear me?
No.
You're going to use the mic because it's not TV, John.
Stand at the podium.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
It's for the TV. You don't actually project on the mic.
Okay, so everybody can hear me all right? We just have to do this for the TV.
I can see you.
Got it.
If you're doing anything with your face, I won't be able to see it.
Let me slide over this way a little to the right since I don't need the computer. Hopefully that'll be good.
Why don't you bring the... They're going to bring you on their mic.
I just want everybody to see it's a little thinner than... It's a little thinner than I anticipated when I got it from the engineer. But basically, this board shows in the green what's been completed to date as of Friday, which is across... If you're familiar with Alms House Road, the Both property is down here, right on the edge of this parcel. This is where the creek comes in on the edge of here. This is where we connected to the interceptor. We came up, we crossed over Alms House Road, and we just set another manhole this morning. We've passed the area where there'll be the connection for Militia Hill Road. They're going to drop back and do that. The next four to six weeks, this is the anticipated schedule, we'd like to do more than that. If we can, we're going to try. The biggest problem we have, other than rock, but we knew that, is weather.
Could you just say the roads when you're saying the section?
Yes. Unfortunately, we're not on the road yet.
Got it.
Alms House Road is here, and this is as you go down the hill, the back way out of town. This is Militia Hill, which comes onto Alms House, and this is going to end up in the next week or two will be in Shady Brook Circle.
Circle.
Yes, I keep getting... It's calling it Stony Brook, but it's Shady Brook.
You're so impressive.
Shady Brook Circle. So anyway, we're going to move there. We'll be moving down Pebble Ridge Road. Letters are going out tomorrow, probably be postmarked Thursday or Friday to all the residents that are going to be affected in the areas we've completed and will be completing in the next four to six weeks, asking them to contact us so we can come visit the home and determine where their lateral connection ultimately will be. So if they want to make adjustments to it, they can do that. Anyone that doesn't want to get gravity, even if we have the gravity mains and wants to go with a grinder pump because they want to have it certain location on their property but it won't flow, they can do that as well. It's going to be up to them. But we're going to do that contact over the next week to 10 days. We do have... This has been... Militia Hill was originally, I believe, nine low pressure and six or seven gravity. Due to the density of the rock we encountered here, which we didn't expect to be as difficult to deal with as it was, we changed all these to low pressure, which was, I think, an additional seven or eight properties. That way, we could raise this line that's already been installed and avoid a significant amount of rock. During a short period, probably about a week to 10 days, we had to do what we call peg boarding, which essentially is pre-drilling the rock in advance to be able to rip it out. Machines that we use to peck the rock or to grind the rock, both machines literally were failing because of the temperature being generated by the friction, and it was not doing anything to the rock, it was just damaging the equipment. That's why we went with the pre-drilling. We're going to anticipate that that's going to happen in other places based on rock borings. So I already asked Gilmore to look at the boring logs and to see where we're close to rock becoming an interference in the gravity line, and we're going to look to see if we need to pre-drill ahead of that. That cost for that will come out of contingency, but in certain instances, it may allow us to speed up the work, so there may be some savings at the back end. The change over here to low pressure and the potential change on Alms House Road for an additional 13 people to low pressure would also result in a labor savings, which would be a credit, and a material pipe savings, which would be a credit. Basically, that would hopefully offset some of the money already spent on the pre-drilling. But those amounts will be calculated after the project is completed. There was a letter sent to the township requesting that you review the potential that we were going to change those over. So at some point, we need to sit down and go over that. We don't have to do it tonight, but that's something that would be, again, I think, 13 people. Everyone on this side is already going to be low pressure. I believe it affects the folks on this side of the road. But going to low pressure for this section will significantly reduce their costs privately as well because they'll only have to dig one hole. If we experience the same density of rock in the road here, every one of these people trying to put a gravity line in down 10 feet is going to have a plumber come in and have to bust out rock, and it's just going to get extraordinarily expensive. So basically, just as an overall, this is where we plan to be in the next four to six weeks is along Pebble Ridge Road, and then potentially Militia Hill. I'm just trying to get the equipment for this set up, so that may be after school starts or stops. That's when we're going to do that. Same with this one. If we do do it, it won't be until late in June, just because we don't want to interfere with the buses and the bus stops. So that's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask? Yes.
If low-pressure lines result in a savings, why wouldn't you design the whole thing for low pressure versus gravity?
Well, you can. Not everybody likes low pressure, and low-pressure system, if you did it system-wide, you have to gauge how much line size you'd need and where you'd need to have junctions and things like that. It's just a different design. It's definitely less expensive, but it's more maintenance eventually.
Okay.
So it's one of those things where it's a trade-off. But in this particular instance, because of what we found here and the boring logs, we know gravity's not going to work. Gravity is much less maintenance down the road.
Okay.
We have a program that hopefully we're going to be able to extend to these folks for maintenance on grinder pumps, but we've used them before in the township. We've had good history. There are failures on them to a certain degree, but nothing that would stop you from using them. But for maintenance purposes, we really try to avoid it when we can. In this particular instance, it's a cost savings because of the rock. If there was no rock, it would be all gravity because it's just easy to put in, and there's no muss, no fuss, so to speak. But with this rock, it could extend the amount of time it takes to put it in.
And, John, sometimes when you have the low pressure, and we had dealt with that when we did it years ago, was allowing, if you don't have enough people tying in initially, you have... Basically, the lines get septic.
Right, you have to flush regularly.
You have to flush regularly.
Because they...
Because you don't have enough flow volume given.
Right, the horsepower... The low-pressure system is... The horsepower of the entire system is what makes it work.
Gotcha.
So ultimate build-out is when it works best.
Other questions from the board?
I thought it was interesting...
Wait, just a second.
I thought it was interesting in our last meeting, too, when you mentioned, because I also... About the grinder pumps and their $10 a month for insurance.
Right.
Which, you know, you think, how often do they break? But if you tell the story about what you find or have found in there, it opened my eyes that it's just not...
Yes, in Pebble Hill, there was an incident, and it's a couple of years ago, but we kept getting calls because one of the pumps kept failing. So we finally went out and pulled the entire thing out, and it's a sealed system, so you don't actually have to look at it if you don't need to. But one of the kids who lived at the house had taken a string of about 20 feet of Christmas lights and just kept flushing it, and they kept pulling it until the pump basically got wrapped up with it, and we had to pull the whole pump out. Thankfully, it didn't do any permanent damage. We were able to reinstall it, but those are the kind of... You do get crazy stuff.
That's a good $10.
He was enjoying... He said he liked watching it go across the floor on its own when he would hit the...
Oh, that's so fun. Anybody else have questions before I take from the audience? Would you please take the microphone and identify yourself up here?
Yeah.
Right here. Identify yourself through your address.
I'm Kelly Keegan, Willow Lane, Warrington, part of this. Can you help me with the timeline and understanding what roads are going where and about a timeframe?
Yeah, Elaine, I would say... I would say just only because we're going to end up... I'm going to have two crews. Probably after we get to around this point, we're going to start a second crew over here.
Okay.
So if I was to take... And this is just a preliminary. I'll try to get you a more firm, if you want to leave your contact information. But I would say probably October we would be in this area. Yeah.
So I have another question. With that being said, when you do finish a street, when can people hook up versus other streets not even having a pipe yet?
We're going to be... What I'm trying to do, and I think Dr. ... And I can't remember his last name, owns this property here. He actually has a discharge into the stream. So we're going to connect him if he's not already... He might already be connected. Mr. Both also. So we're going to try to do it, you know, as long as we get a couple of manholes ahead of you so that we don't have backflow of odor, we should be able to have people connect as they want to.
So that's a good thing to hear, because we've been waiting.
Yeah, I want to get everybody... Yeah, as many people connected as quickly as we can. Obviously, this is an issue that we have to stay on top of.
Okay, and then one more question. When you said something about contacting people when you're in the neighborhood...
A letter will go out to you individually.
But what that means, do we let a plumber know now where we think it should be before you contact us?
No. What you want to do is you want to check with us just to make sure it's... First of all, it's viable where you want to put it.
Okay.
And secondly, we want to be able to do that because we're going to mark here on our plans where we've decided that you mutually come up with what works for you.
Yeah.
That way, we know when we get there, we'll be ready.
All right.
And the plumbers, unless you're putting in a grinder pump, you don't want the plumber to do a gravity line until the line's in the street. You can put in a pump ahead of time because it's not gravity-fed, so you can pretty much put it wherever you want.
We don't know that yet, right?
No, well, it's up... Yeah, we can make a determination once you get the letters.
All right, thanks.
But if you need something ahead of time, feel free to contact our office. Somebody can be sent out to talk to you.
Right, and just so the board knows...
Thank you.
The letterhead, we created our office jointly, worked together administrators, to put the letterhead so it has both our seal and the authority seal, so they know it's a partnership, and people can call either one, but, you know, probably on my...
And anybody... If anybody has... We did get a call. There's a graduation party someone's having on the 15th, so they just said, "Please don't be in front of my house digging." And anytime that comes up, if anybody has a party or anything, just let us know. If we can avoid being in front of your house, we'll try to do that if it's possible. Okay?
One other question. Website updates on the township.
Yes, we did one last week. I will do one Friday. We're trying to... Unfortunately, and some of you already know this from the committee, we ran into every possible problem. We had 45 days of rain.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, in this area, on Mr. Both's property, was a swamp. We couldn't work for a long period of time, and with the rock delay and everything, we got a slow start. Now, we're going to start moving pretty quick, so we'll be doing regular updates on Fridays, and there will be one on this Friday.
Is that every Friday?
We're going to try to do it every Friday.
Perfect.
Yes.
And we also sent... Just remind the board, it was Mr. Close, we put a flyer together so that residents in the area, hopefully everyone just put it on their refrigerator.
Yep.
Gives the information on the websites where to go, on the telephone numbers to call and everything like that. And we sent that out a while ago.
Okay. Go ahead.
John, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I noticed Alex isn't here.
He's on vacation, and Jim's on vacation.
But let me... We received his letter here, and he is saying that he would like our concurrence with what you just explained.
Right.
So you... Do you want us now to nod our heads, or what do you want?
No, no. What I said was, we've already... This was done because there really was no choice because of the rock. It's the Alms House Road one that we wanted to talk to the township supervisor about and maybe consult with your engineer, just so that everybody's on the same page. It doesn't have to be done now. This is not holding anything up. So it's really a matter of everybody kind of sitting down, just getting on the same page. It's going to be a benefit in the long run, but it's no rush to get to it yet.
Okay. Just let me know, and I can put it back on the board's agenda.
Absolutely.
If you want to have a meeting with the engineer.
We can do that, and then if you want, we can have...
Maybe the committee meeting, the little subcommittee.
We can do that. The next meeting, is it July?
July.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually. That'll work out good.
Are we still on good timing then?
Yeah, the schools will be closed, and we can deal with it.
Okay, we'll talk about it the July subcommittee and come back to this board in July. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next item is the new website. Andrea Suston, she in there?
Mm-hmm. Coming up. Coming up.
We never see Andrea because she's always in the back doing things. Andrea is responsible for this nice publication. It's actually quite well-done. It is always well-done, I should say. But there's some very interesting articles in here, and I'd like to especially bring your attention to "Thank a Bee" by Ann Woodbury. It just made me laugh for about 10 minutes. It's very... There's a lot of good stuff in here, so... Thank you, good job, Andrea. You have something to say about the rest of our system.
Great. All right. Good evening. My name is Andrea Suston, and I'm the special projects coordinator here at Doylestown Township. I'm here to speak about the future of Doylestown Township communications. We can improve our communications with a website redesign, use of communication tools, and township-wide branding. The township website has been a resource for serving citizens, providing information, and promoting government transparency. But over the past 10 years, while the township has grown and evolved, the website layout, design, and capabilities have stayed stagnant. Our current website is about 10 years old and does not stand out. The inner workings are not easily... are not easy to manage, causing a decrease in productivity, and the public information we provide is buried within a confusing site map, making it difficult for users to navigate. Because of this, we are not attracting residents to view our site, gather information, or get involved. Our inability to capture feedback is another missing element. With the website redesign, we will be able to capture feedback using Google Analytics. We would also be able to track our page views to see if the information we're putting out there is even being seen. This is important in making sure we're taking the correct actions in communicating with our residents year after year. Here are some other municipal websites. As you can see, Montgomery Township, who recently went through a website overhaul, is shown. Their website is eye-catching with the use of bright colors and recognizable icons. New Britton Township shows a clean and professional template but lacks creativity. Upper Marion Township... Sorry, it's true. Upper Marion Township, which was created by New Concepts Online, is also shown. Though it portrays a modest look, the information, events, and news items are highlighted and easy to view. Lastly, Chalfont Borough shows the use of icons, but as a focal point. As you remember, our current homepage does use icons, but ours get lost in all the other things going on on the homepage. During this process, it was important to view other municipal websites and see which elements ours was missing and what we wanted to incorporate in our new website. I'll show you some examples at the end of the presentation. In order to have a more productive website, we need to incorporate ways to manage content, promote events and news, with an intuitive calendar, host blog and news items, include photo galleries, and have a mobile-friendly and responsive layout. We also definitely need to comply with ADA accessibility, and lastly, create a cohesive design, unifying the township departments, and jump-starting our future communication $10,000 was allocated for a website overhaul in 2019. This would include an updated look and communications tool to promote meetings, events, programs, and all the great things that Doylestown Township community... Doylestown Township offers to the community. Three proposals were obtained, in which myself, Stephanie, Karen, and Caitlin from Park and Recreation, and Barb Brown from DTMA all attended. It was important for all of us to attend in order to collaborate. A unanimous recommendation came about when the staff agreed that New Concepts Online was the way to go. Kim Junad, the president of the company, presented herself as a personable and hard-working individual. She expressed her understanding of municipal websites, and that was then that we realized New Concepts Online Incorporated was the company we wanted to work with. I took this recommendation and then presented it to the TAB Committee, in which they recommended we also take this route. To summarize, I am here to recommend that Doylestown Township hire New Concepts Online for our website redesign. New Concepts knows the business, as they have worked with Upper Dublin, Upper Marion, the Abington Police Department, various libraries, and many more. We will gain the use of standard tools such as updated technology, email marketing, and analytics. New Concepts will also allow us to meet our current and future needs by unifying all of our departments, by increasing productivity, compliance, and communication. Okay. With that being said, this is where I wanted to show some examples. Would you still like to see them?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so excuse me. Okay. So one of the examples that's very important is... So this is Upper Marion Township's website, and New Concepts Online did this website. And it's a little different here because Ed has the screen kind of shrunken, but one of the major things that they have is an interactive calendar. So the calendar will look like this. Okay? And it also has... You can view it as a list, a month, week, or day. So currently, our website... Oh, we'll get to that. Our website, we don't have a calendar. We have a section here where I have to create posts, and with these posts, I have to add in the date, and then after the meeting happens, I go in and take it down. Where a calendar, we could put in the whole year, and as the events happen, they will then disappear from the homepage. So that's just increasing productivity and making it easier for residents to come on, view the whole month, see what's going on. And in addition, our calendar will be able to link to our current program that we use, where we upload meeting minutes and agendas, so we'll be able to interact them together. Another important thing that was important to DTMA was something similar to this. This is the North Hampton... North Penn Water Authority. So a "Pay My Bill" button. So though this button, I feel like, gets a little lost in everything else going on up here, the point is, is that they have the ability to create this button and put it up on the top of their website, where we don't even have that ability right now. But a "Pay My Bill" button was important to DTMA. They wanted it to be, you know, large and on top, so residents could go there and easily pay their bill. I guess one more example... I mean, these are all very random, but one more example. So Chalfont Borough, they have another thing that was important was... Hopefully, when we do ours, the address will be, you know, up top like it is now, but when you click on this, it takes you right to Google Maps, and you can get directions. So another main thing that I wanted to add to our website was, if people are on their phone, you know, driving here, they can click right on it, and it'll take it.
The chief is sitting right here. You don't want to be saying that.
Well, parked.
Oh, parked, yes. Not while they're driving. Before they leave the house, yes. So these are just very... I mean, these are all, in my eyes, a little more like simpler examples, but I just wanted to, you know, bring them some attention. Okay. So after seeing some examples of what our township site could have, I would like to ask your permission to move forward in hiring New Concepts Online to create our Doylestown Township website. Thank you.
Well, in this...
Are there any questions?
Yes. In this process, will there be an opportunity for, like, I know, maybe like somebody like Ryan and the chief might want to... Anyone else here might want to have some conversation about how it progresses?
Definitely, yeah. So this is just the start. This is going to be a process where all the different departments and the board members can get involved to talk about what they want to see. So for finance, for example, they can say, you know, "We want a directory with each person's name and email and their extension." So during this process, myself, as well as Kim, you know, who's the, you know, professional, we will be meeting with everyone to see, you know, what they think needs to be done.
And Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, but at some point, there's going to be a demo dummy of our website, so then all of us can go in and say, "Hey, I can't find this. Add this," and...
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, so there'll be a period of time...
Off-record or off-line?
Yeah, because basically, they're building it over here, and then once it's... Once we go through all kind of like the changes that we want to make and we're ready to go and we do the payment or whatever, it then points our website to that host, and that becomes our host. So it would be a seamless transition. But yes, before that process, we would have time to go on it, you know, play with the website, make sure it's working the way we want it to work, and make changes at that time if we wanted to.
And it'll also integrate with Crime Watch and the Park and Rec registration?
It would, yes. So we would be able to have kind of what they're calling like a landing page for the police, where we could put some information and then link them right to Crime Watch. And then for Park and Rec, which we're currently lacking now, which was in the memo that you guys received, we will be also adding a microsite of Park and Rec, and then linking people to MyRec to sign up for events. But also DTMA, I didn't really get to show it, but DTMA is another one of our microsites who would have a complete redesign in a way that they are still their own entity, but it's part of the township as a whole, and they will have their own unique look and feel, but it will still be a cohesive, you know, township.
Sounds great.
Website.
Any other questions? All right.
Hi, Dan Wood. Obviously, Andre. I had a couple of questions from a technical standpoint. I'm a software engineer. For maintenance reasons, are we going to be having a maintenance contract with this web developer to continue over time to handle this with us?
Yes, we will. They offer a certain amount of hours for training after we receive the website, and then there is a maintenance where they charge hourly for needing help making any, like, large changes or anything like that. But I'm hoping that, you know, my knowledge of what I've learned thus far, it'll be hopefully minimum help, but they are there for us if we need them at an hourly charge.
Okay, and then this might... You might not know this yet. This might depend on the contractor. Do you know what kind of backend system you're using, like Squarespace?
It's WordPress.
Okay, WordPress, great. Just if you need help with that, I'm familiar with WordPress.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? We going to go with this?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the funds for the website redesign.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
All right, next item is the end of the year recap by the Traffic Advisory Committee.
I'm the chairman of the Traffic Advisory Committee. Do you have slides? Oh, you have slides over there. There we go, super. I'm the chairman of the committee. Doug Rose, the vice chair. Carol Sugars is also a member. So we have three members. Staff-wise, Chief Logan's involved, Dave Tomco, Ken Snyder, and Matt Johnson from Pernoni. We meet every other month on the second Wednesday. In terms of accomplishments, I put together 18 months of accomplishments because we hadn't reported since the end of, end of '17 essentially. We always review the traffic statistics on a monthly basis, determine any actions that might be needed, and, you know, we have our own guidelines to look at those. So every month, every other month when we get together, we get some of the stats from the chief, and we go over them. We look at residents' concerns. On an average month, we probably have two or three submissions, or average two-month period, we probably have two or three submissions, and during that period to look at. We've looked at ways to effectively reduce speed limits, and this was kind of significant. Last summer, Dave discovered a, we discovered a meeting at PennDOT, or a teleconference that PennDOT was having, and we found a way to cost-effectively reduce speed limits without having to do traffic studies and things. So this was a really good way. This is what we did in the Spring Valley area, without having to do engineering studies and everything.
Oh.
So there was a change in the laws that we weren't aware of that really helped out. So, so it makes it a lot easier to do that kind of a change. We monitor the adherence to speed changes after that reduction is done. Spring Valley is an example right now. Rogers Road's another one. Meet with the Bike and Hike Committee. We've met with them a couple of times during this period to go over new proposals, make sure at least we have some input into, you know, some of the crossing issues, things like that. And we also were ones that pointed out the need for that lower state road flashing signal way back when, you know, so I'm glad it finally was installed. To give you an idea of the submissions, this is an 18-month period, 17-month period, whatever. Spring Valley was by far the most popular submissions. Some of them, I tried to eliminate the duplicates. They were probably more than 12, but many times, people put them in a couple of times. And then you can see some of the other roads that we've gotten submissions on. So typical, a lot of them are over in the Pebble Hill area, and then the rest are scattered about. So gives you an idea of the volumes that we're getting, mainly coming in through the website. In terms of our objectives for this year, obviously, we're not quite halfway through it. Rogers Road, we're getting, continuing to get complaints. There was a stop, three-way stop sign installed in there late '17, if I remember correctly, something somewhere in '17. And it's still not helping. And that sign was put in because of sight-distance issues. It wasn't put in because of speeding, but nonetheless, we're still getting complaints about speeding along there. So, and we know it's true. You know, we know there is speeding. We've seen the monitor, the results. So we're going to have to do, probably end up doing something there to mitigate that. So that's just a little bit of a warning there. Cherry Road is another one where we have a similar issue. Speed limit was reduced. We just got another complaint, again, about the speeding there, and the original person that made the complaints way back when. So we are, we are, like I said, we are looking at bike and hike proposals and make sure we get feedback into them. We're going to be updating the survey procedures, which you need if a speed, like, say you need traffic calming. You need to do a survey of the residents to understand, to make sure that they understand what that entails, and the pluses and minuses, and do a survey and have, I think, a 70% approve of those changes. We will be updating that. We haven't updated it probably since 2010, 2011. So we wanted to make sure the flow is in compliance with current PennDOT regulations, things like that. We will be, you know, continue to review incoming concerns. That's not going to change. And it's usually, usually about speeding. Occasionally, it's about signage and maybe pedestrian concerns. And we will try to incorporate a feedback loop to get feedback back on a more timely basis than probably what we're doing now. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Mark.
Short and sweet, yeah.
You do a great job. Thank you. Next is Art Sabloski, reporting on the Bicentennial Committee here. What? I thought he was pointing that at me.
I thought you were in trouble.
Shut me up!
Oh, good afternoon.
Clicker.
It's a pleasure to be here and to give you a summary of what the Bicentennial Committee has been doing and has done. As you know, it's a, it was a limited-purpose committee, that is to say. It had a specific thing, it's done its job, and it has dissolved. But over the period of two years, from the beginning of 19, I'm sorry, of 2017 to the end of 2018, we either sponsored or participated in close to a dozen activities, which we had, which were open to the public and free of charge. This is important because all of this was done without tax funds at all from, from any source. It was, money was, all came from donations, from sponsors, supports, and sales of items. So, and we collected, for our purposes, well over $30,000 to do all, to do all of this. Now, the, 2017 was the formation year, and what we did was, you know, came up with a lot of ideas, and we settled about on a dozen items, but during that year was very important, very formative, because we had a very active committee, subcommittee on, to get sponsors and donations, and also we came up with, I thought was in something very important, which was our logo. And I'm sure everyone remembers this.
Yeah.
And also on the back, we had all of our sponsors on the back of it. But anyhow, it was, this is one of the successful items that were sold at the time of, of our committee. And I'd just like to go over with you a couple of things that we had done during the course of, during the course of the year. It was very important, we also partnered with the Telecommunication Advisory Board, who did all our advertising for us on the air, and also produced all the tele, all the programming for us. We also worked very closely with the Doylestown Historic Committee, who worked with us to put on some of these activities, and also with, we also had the Environmental Advisory Council, which we worked on with several projects as well. The kickoff was in the, was in September of 2017. If you recall, we had the symbolic demolition of the old building, and they, they had what was called the Wrecking Ball event. That was very well received. Then from there, we went into the beginning of 2018, in January of that year, with the, with the gala event. We had a special drink which was produced for this. We had, it was a formal affair. It was, we had a group, the Lights Out, who came and performed. And if you ever saw the video on that thing, you'll see it was pretty crowded, and everyone had a grand time for themselves. The next thing we did was in March, March 13th, which we honored the explorer that we had here in town, William Edgar Giles. And this event was held at Delaware Valley University. A movie was shown, which had received local accolades at a, at a film festival, and also we had a lecture afterwards. This is when we started to really pick up speed, because in May, May 6th, we partnered with the EAC, and it was their event, the dedication of the native plant demolition, demoguard, sorry, not demolition. But we helped them, we assisted them in that. We also put out some advertising in their behalf as well. And this was held in Central Park. The next thing that we had done was in the end of May, which was May 28th, and this was a big one, really. And it was the Memorial Day Parade, in which we had a float. And if you remember that, it was the biggest darn best-looking float there ever was. And it was very well received, again, over there. But special accolades have to go out to the small cadre volunteers who helped decorate this float over a number of, a number of weeks, and especially to our own Parks and, Parks and Rec people, who donated a lot of their time, energy, and materials on, on this. Also, special note was Ann Woodbury of EAC, and also a member of our committee who designed that float and made sure that, and honched the entire thing. The next really, and also another banner celebration we had was on July 14th with the Hammerstein Sing-Along. If you remember that, it was a picnic affair in front of, in the Hammerstein Estate. Many people attended this, and I think we blocked the roads for half a day on that one. The, and during this period of time, there was a contest going on for the adoption of the new flag, which we see over here. The, the flag itself, there were 63 submissions on this, most of whom obtained within the last month, which was in, which was in May. And then there was a selection of that and the, and the award of $1,000 of this, which was, which was donated by Barbara. Thank you very much for that.
That was anonymous. Moving on.
Anonymous. But any event, the, the event, the, the flag was first raised on September 29th. That's when we had our fireworks display, because you remember that was delayed a little bit. So what occurred was, is that the Bicentennial Committee donated approximately a third of that year's budget for the fireworks. If you saw, you know, it would last a little longer, was a little bit more spectacular than we had in other years. The, at the end of October, we had two weekends where the, where trees were planted. And this was the, this was partnered with the EAC. We planted 110 trees with volunteers, and then another 100 trees were planted in the park system that were maple trees. So I went around and counting them, and it looks like they're all around except for two. So it looks like we're doing pretty well on the maintenance of those trees.
Two are over here in front of the new building.
Yes, and they are, they are in, they are in the park, right here, at, at Central Park. The, two, we had two more significant events. The one was on November 11th, the Veterans Day, which was the Veterans Appreciation Day event. And it was particularly moving because it was the 100th anniversary of the conclusion of World War I. So we had veterans there that were from, from all the branches of service. We had a bell-ringing ceremony, which was, which went on around the world, and we participated in that as well. The last major event was on December 18th, which was the dedication of the Time Capsule. Many people had put items in to the capsule, and hopefully 100 years from now, they'll be pulled out and is pristine condition. But also, that was nice because it was broadcast on local TV as a news item, and also as part of this was the, one of our members found out that the post office would come out and do a special franking event, in other words, with a special postmark on that day. So anyone who brought in holiday cards or anything else had that done. So the only last thing which is left was really the putting up of the dedication plaque for the trees, which will occur after the new building, after we're in the new building. I want to add a special thanks, as I mentioned, to Ann Woodbury for, for all the work she did on, for the trees and the floats, to Stu Abramson from the Doylestown Historic Society for all the work that he has done on the Giles event, and also on the Hammerstein. And then also backbone of the group, Fred Felstein, who worked on the Giles and on the franking, and also made sure that we got deuce of the Dell Valley University, and Al Clark, who did all the woodworking for us, which he so generously provided. The, and I cannot fail to mention the hard work that was, that was, that was done by Stephanie, Stephanie Mason and her staff, is as if she waved the magic wand and it all happened. So thank you very much.
Because of Barbara's leadership.
And also with Barbara's leadership, of course. That, that goes without saying. But I also would like to mention just a few other people involved. Ed, Chris Nardo was involved in the committee also, Tina Mezzarotti, Mary Lou Perry, Dave Hanson, our past president who helped, who did us, I'm sorry, the past chairman for our first year, Joe Peternesto, sorry, I always mispronounce names, Dr. Val Gavin, and of course, to Barbara Lyons, and to Chris, Chris Maddish, another member, and also Al Clark, as I mentioned before. Thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words, and I want to say it was a very successful year. Many people participated to make this thing happen, and it was really a joy to be on the committee. Thank you.
It's a great job.
Thank you.
And thanks to you, Art, for your chairmanship and your steadfast, kind, caring, efficient leadership. Some of us weren't always kind. You were. And you should know, we won this statewide award in communications this year, for 2018, at the Pennsylvania Association of Township Supervisors. Some of us were there to get the award, Ken, Steffi and I, and they did this nice story about it, and they made, and they had samples of all of our pieces of communication for 2018. They had 10 samples of what, you know, this website and this newsletter. Five of the pieces were for the bicentennial. Stuff that you, we produced that got out there. There are bits and pieces of communication on our bicentennial that, you know, made history for us again. So thank you for everything that you did to make it happen. All right, next, moving on to visitors and public comments. The first, do we have anybody here from Steeplechase?
Yeah, lady, hold people with their hands up.
Okay, is, is Mr. Sweet here?
He is.
Okay. Is there someone going to speak about the, or should you just guys want to? Because we're not making any presentation. We just offer the opportunity for you guys to make a, you know, then you come to the microphone and, or not, it's up to you. We're giving you the opportunity, because there are some questions or some issues.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Pat Ionata. I live at 123 Steeplechase Drive in the Doylestown Hunt neighborhood. And we're here to ask to make the board aware of a situation, which I believe you're already aware of, that there's, there's a resident in the neighborhood, up the street from all of our houses, that's running a home business, which we believe is in violation of township ordinance. There has been zoning board meetings scheduled, but they were continuously canceled for one reason or another. In the meantime, the, the residents are continuing to run that business, and it's causing some level of disruption in neighborhoods. So we're just asking the board for your help in getting this matter, getting this matter resolved.
It is scheduled, the hearing is scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
For next week, I believe.
Right.
June 17th, I believe.
June 17th, thank you.
It is June 17th.
So it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on their calendar. And we've, we've taken a position, nothing, nothing...
We are there in support of the administration with respect to his cease and desist.
Okay, okay.
So we're there to, you know, to support our zoning officers' actions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, so.
For a little clarification, Sinclair is here. The applicant made an application. We, when it was presented to this board, they have an opportunity each time a zoning hearing board application comes into the township to weigh in on it. And that was done probably in December of last year. It was then scheduled, and the applicant asked for the first and second continuance, as it was our understanding that they were looking for some commercial space, and going through the similar process in another community. Unfortunately, that hasn't come to fruition yet. The third continuance was because there was not a quorum of the zoning hearing board, or not a quorum, but a, a full complement of the zoning hearing board, only two of the three members. And an applicant has the right, under the municipality's planning code, to have a full complement review their case. At this time, it is scheduled for June 17th, as we said. The solicitor's office will be there. But we've checked and kind of double-checked, and I'll check a third time, Mr. Garten, that while a applicant once receives notice and has provided the community or township with the zoning hearing board application, they are able, under the municipality's planning code, to continue to operate until they have sort of their hearing or day in court, if you will, when everybody comes together. That is still the case.
That's still the law, yes.
The law has not changed, okay. And I believe that has been explained by Mr. Salisbury from our code department on a number of times to a number of the residents.
Okay, all right. Well, we appreciate your help, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're still welcome. You have to come up to the mic.
You have to come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Celia Morgan-Ezye. I live at the same address. I would just say that...
Drop that down, so you don't have to...
I don't know whether it's significant or not, but the, those residents have, in the past day or two, posted a sign out front of facts and disputing different things and so on, that, in my experience from the beginning of all this, is quite erroneous. I mean, everything listed there is not true. So I just want to say that. I don't know whether you asked them to post that signage...
No, we had nothing to do with it.
But they did, and it's not accurate.
No, and we don't, we don't read it, we won't get involved in it, and the best thing you can do is just ignore it.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just have a quick question.
You have to stand up and walk to the microphone. Please.
How many times do they get to have a continuance? Can this go on indefinitely? Because I've been to three meetings...
Who are you?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
My name is Loretta Binotto. I live at, in Doylestown Hunt on Fox Chase Lane.
Thank you.
And I just want to know if this can just go on indefinitely? Because I keep going to meetings, and they keep getting continuances.
It's up to the zoning hearing board, not to the township, but obviously, we have not been in support of those applications, and we will continue to object to any that are asked for, but it's not up to us to grant or deny.
Who is it up to?
Zoning hearing board.
Okay, so this, they can just say, this can just keep being continued?
Well, they have to deal with us, too, because we are, we are, we have something to say about this, because we have a...
We're parties to it.
We're parties to it. It's our township, and we want to get it resolved. So no, we don't, they're, they're usually respectful of all the, of the process. We've never had an issue before, and I don't think we have an issue now. It's just, it's just this, it's, it's all lit up for you guys in your neighborhood, and normally it wouldn't be so public a problem, but because it's in your neighborhood and you see it every day, it's a public problem, so you're annoyed by it constantly.
Well, it's disruptive to the area.
Yes, that too. But so, so continuances in legal matters and court matters and zoning hearing board is quite common. So it's not like anybody's doing anything to annoy you, or there's no conspiracy going on. They're just simply, you know, that's how the, how it gets done. So as I understand it, we're going to have a hearing on the 17th, and hopefully everything will be buttoned up then, right?
Okay, but they could ask for another one if they...
They can always ask.
We could ask for one, too.
Okay, but it can be denied?
Can be denied.
So, and that would be the township zoning group that was...
Hearing board, zoning hearing board.
They act as a quasi-judicial board.
Okay.
Pointy-bend board, but they are quasi-judicial and independent of the board of supervisors.
And if there is one, is there a way we can find out before we get to the meeting?
It is always posted on the website.
Okay, it would be posted in advance?
It is, it is right now.
Okay, thank you.
And I would encourage the residents to attend.
Anybody else? Okay, any other public comment from anybody for any matter? All right, hearing none, going to go on to the announcements. We're next going to meet for our board meeting on June 18th, 2018, at 5:00 p.m., and that will be sadly, our last meeting in the double lines. So, June 18th, if you want to come and like get all teary-eyed with me, because I'll be so sad to leave here, is June 18th. And our next meeting, our meeting in July, will be in the new building, so stay tuned. Township Board of Supervisors is going to have a budget work session on Tuesday, June 18th, at 3:00 p.m. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I might have misspoke. The meeting on June 18th is at 5:00. I don't know if I said 7:00, did I? Okay.
June 18th.
June 18th. And then June 18th, we're also having a budget meeting at 3:00 o'clock, same place, same timeframe. 2019 discount park movie tickets are available now, and you can purchase your tickets through the administrative offices. The Thompson Performing Arts Series gets going with the Fabulous Grease Band on June 19th, Wednesday, June 19th, 7:00, at the Monument Bank Amphitheater. It is free, and it's going to be fabulous. If you haven't seen the Fabulous Grease Band, I didn't mean to say that twice, but they are amazing, and they will get you dancing, even if you don't feel like it, you'll be dancing. Throwback Thursday, I don't know what that means, Throwback Thursday, but the movie is E.T. It's a movie on Throwback Thursday. It's going to be held Thursday, June 20th, go figure, at dusk at Central Park at the amphitheater. And that's also free. We're going to be, township is, this whole facility is going to be closed, wait, that's not right.
That's a storm.
We're going to be accepting storm-related leaf and yard, storm-related only. So, if you've got stuff left over from last year, we're not taking it. It has to be storm-related, leaf and yard waste, at the drop-off site to New Britton Road entrance to Central Park, and you can do that 8:30 to 9:00, or excuse me, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. And those are extended hours, I guess, because it's storm-related debris that we're collecting. Kids Castle's temporarily closed until later this summer. They're installing new, and lots of play equipment for children of all abilities, so stay tuned. July 7th is Big Romeo and the fireworks at the Monument. July 7th, fireworks with Big Romeo at the amphitheater down in Central Park. And then July 19th, I have no idea what Professional Recreation Park Day is, but it's July 19th. And then last, the Doylestown Township Golf Outing, which was yesterday, didn't happen because of the storm damage to the Doylestown Country Club and all that debris, I says is probably going to make its way down through our collection site. But anyway, it's now going to be on August 26th at Doylestown Country Club, 9:00 a.m. So, if you couldn't make it on Monday, yesterday, you can make it on this one. All right, phew, moving on. Minutes from May 7th, 2019. Has everyone received them and has an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Any corrections, Mr. Collo?
No, and I think the reason probably, hopefully, is that with me being a nag, that everybody's being a little bit more conscientious about it before it's printed, so I don't have any changes, and I'm proud that it's clean now.
And I apologize to female horses everywhere for calling yourself a nag.
I've been called worse, believe me.
All right, nothing from Mr. Collo? Anybody else? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondences, Steffi's going to tell you about an award of funding.
Yes, we are very excited to have received a Arlie grant.
Explain Arlie.
Good question. Automated red light enforcement, and we are the recipients of $380,817 to improve the safety at the intersection of Swamp Road and Eastern Road by re-timing the traffic signals and installing mass emergency preemption, dilemma zone detection, video detection, uninterruptible power supply, pedestrian push buttons, and a dedicated hand-manned pedestrian signals with the countdown timers. So, that will be a major improvement at that intersection.
Okay.
We are very proud and very excited, and we thank Penoni and Dave Tomsoff for his work on this.
Thank you.
That is a 100% reimbursable grant.
That's great.
Good job. Excellent.
The question I had on that study, that study was done before that new restaurant was being put up there on Old Easton.
In the borough?
In the borough.
Okay.
Yes, the new one there at the borough. Will that have any impact on the traffic flows in and out of that intersection?
Which new one? I'm sorry.
They're building a new one right now.
Right next, across from the back, yeah, next to the old.
That's going to be a restaurant?
There's a huge building there, yeah.
I saw it, it's a big building, it's a restaurant?
Yeah, it's a restaurant.
Thank you, we want to go to?
Just a restaurant?
All right, so there's a new restaurant, it's not in the township.
It is not in the township, but it impacts, it could impact that intersection, that's all I'm highlighting.
I'm hoping that the borough, through their land development process, did analysis of the traffic and where everything's going and everything like that, I'm sure they did. So, you know, we'll be working with them with implementation of this, so we can make sure that everything gets tied together, can't we?
Okay. Any other questions for Stephanie about the grant? Okay, moving on, reports from the solicitor.
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
Yes, one quick thing. As we move close to moving into our new building, luck would have it that the township experienced yet another significant weather event. We had, from 5:30 p.m. till 8:30 p.m. on the 29th, we had 39 calls for service, and from 8:30 p.m. till 6:30 the next morning, we had an additional 29 calls for service. That's a significant amount in that period of time, including flooded roads, down wires, down trees and wires, traffic signals being out, and we also had complete power failure here at the building due to a generator malfunction, which took us about two and a half hours to get back up and running. So, as we move forward to the new building, all the technology and stuff that we spent significant amount of time in trying to get all the website stuff up, hopefully, we're moving in the right direction. With that being said, I think that the, you know, I'd like to compliment my officers as well as the road department for once again, working together to make things seamless. We had generators out there, road barricades out there, and, you know, we communicated with PICO. We did all the things you're supposed to do, we just had a hard time getting the communications out there. So, PICO, I believe, took a couple days to get us back up and running, so all the residents, but considering we had no power, I think we did all right.
Very good, old-fashioned way.
Yes, we, pen and paper.
All right, anything else? All right, township engineer?
I have nothing at this time, except for a program for Dave.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
It's just a quick reminder to all residents, if you do lose power, PICO has asked that every resident calls directly to PICO to let them know you've lost power. Don't rely on your neighbor to let them know. They're looking at phone calls to come in for the neighbor, so the more neighbors they call, the better it is for PICO.
And they have a power outage number?
Yeah, it's in the website.
Bear with me while I log in here. I'm going to give a brief presentation, first off, about our G.I.S., an asset management program, as well as our 2019 road program and what we are going to be doing here this year, moving forward. Okay. So, I want to take us back a little bit, just to last year, to 28th June of 2018, and basically talk to you about what we were looking to do with our asset management program. We were asking for you to approve us to move forward with partnering with C.S. Davison, who provides our new current asset management program, which is C.S. Datum. That is the program we use now. It is a yearly subscription that we have, and also, we partner with Robotics. It is an independent company that supplied a road data analysis survey, which that data was then incorporated into the C.S. Datum asset management program. And so, that's where we are right now at this time. Basically, we received the database in the fall of 2018, and the staff was trained and started using the system immediately after that. I think we had training in October, we had Public Works, the chief was there, we had admin staff, because we want this to be a tool that everybody uses. Our code department was there, DTMA, Keith was there as well, so, and this is, and Jeff as well, correct, our professionals as well took part in that. So, you know, again, a tool that we want everybody to use, and that's what we're looking for moving forward. And also, the robotics data, which was a scan of all of our roads, 77 miles of roads that we had this information done, the data was collected in September 2018, it was quickly after that analyzed and processed and delivered to us in January of 2019, and right now, we basically had that data also merged into the C.S. Datum website. So, now we have the ability to do analytics with the C.S. Datum website from the information we got from Robotics, so we can start to build a five-year road program. But let's put a pause there and say that this is not something that we can just snap our fingers, hit a button, and spit out the results. This takes time, it takes effort to, basically, number one, look at the data and say, is the data that we received correct, okay? And then basically start to slice and dice it. You've got to imagine, you've got 77 miles of roads, so we have to look at all this and start to build this data set and information, start to populate historical information we have from previous years, roads that were repaved, and when they were done, how much repaving was done, and moving forward, then we're looking to, in subsequent years, be able to have this as a basis for our road program, okay? So, that's really was the plan moving forward, it's still the plan moving forward. The key components of the C.S. Datum asset management database, this thing's really endless. If you could think about something that you want to catalog, record, document, store, upload, you can put into there. But the basics of what we're trying to do here is use, have this website available to the code department, number one, and this task is still outstanding, because we have a program called Permit Manager, and Sinclair's been using Permit Manager for a number of years. It's been successful for us, and it's a very good program. That is in the process of being merged into because C.S. Datum, because the company that owns C.S. Datum purchased Permit Manager, and they're migrating. And that was one of the key components, the reasons why we bought this, we bought the subscription for C.S. Datum. Secondly, is the MS4 program. As we know, the MS4 program has got a lot of data with it as well, from outfall testing to documentation, year after year, to reporting, and it's a large, takes a large effort to get that information compiled into one place. We were shown by basically C.S. Datum that how we can utilize this website, and it is a cloud-based website, so you can use it and access it anywhere. You can do it here at the, you know, I can do it here at the podium, which if we have time, I'll show you, and also, you know, out in the field. So, with that, we're hoping that our GHD, who's going to collect this data out in the field, is going to then do this immediately and upload it and then do the report. So, secondly, is the road program, which we'll talk about a little bit, and I've already alluded to, the bridge program, which Penoni Associates is starting our bridge inspections, and they'll be able to upload that information into the database. DTMA is the water system. We've talked to Keith, and they're interested in mapping their water system, and we've started that process as well, because we're doing fieldwork, and then mapping other assets, which includes signs, pipes, and again, anything else that you want to, you know, basically categorize or store data on. This is a screenshot of, quickly, of the township and the information that we were provided by C.S. Datum, and everything on there is a clickable item. So, I can click on a parcel, again, this is a screenshot, I can go live to the website if you want me to, but I can click on any of that, and there's information, data, and we can continually build historical records, whether it be road paving, pipe was replaced, a bridge inspection, a traffic signal permit, plan, which is records, everything like that. So, we can do, we can do a lot of things with this data. Here's just a prime example is, this is, you know, this is a, just a screenshot of the township complex, showing the tennis courts, right where we're at, right here is the tennis courts. Here's, you know, just an asset of a stop sign, which is down the street at Windsor Way. So, again, screenshot of it, you say when it was installed, what it is, and we have historical record of it for multiple purposes. And I just want to thank the chief and the police department, we're partnering with them. They are working with us to start to do this data collection as well. A number of his officers and sergeants have been trained how to use this program and how to use this database, and they took a moment, we were doing some training, and went out, and they actually took a moment to use Crime Watch. So, two plugs, one plug for Crime Watch, because now there's Crime Watch good for informing us about incidents and road closures or accidents or certain things, but also information out to the public. So, that's a picture of Sergeant Jones down at Stop Sign down here at Windsor Way, so they were out helping us. So, you know, we're partnering with them as well. So, that is, that is the asset management. Is there any questions on that, as to where we are today and what we're doing? Just want to give you a brief oversight. I will offer that if anybody wants to learn more about this and what we're doing and some of the analytics, we have to start. We have started, and I will go back and say that John, our intern, is out in the field. He's identified, he's wearing Public Works orange, and he's got a hat, he's out doing all kinds of data collection, and when he's in the office, or when he's here, he's out in the field now, depending on weather, starting all this, and some of that data you see there has been John's work already, and so John's doing that. So, look out for John, he's not in your yard doing anything else but collecting data for us and trying to build our database here. So, again, I offer that if anybody wants to learn more, we can schedule some time, whether it be the road program, data, or asset management in general. So, I will offer that. So, our 2019 road program, just a brief chart of this, and I'm going to outlay this, just historical information at the top, you see year over year, 2015 through 2018, how much money we budgeted, how much we actually spent, and the amount of miles we milled and paved historically for the past three to four years now. So, I just wanted to put that up there. You can see historically, we're about three and three-quarters to, you know, 2016 was pretty big, we did 4.7 miles. I don't have the data for 2015, how much we actually paved, but you could see, we spent a significant amount of money, we probably hit the, we probably hit the three-mile mark in, you know, just based on dollars and cents in 2015. This is still, we're still in the, using the human database of Paul Gar and our old road program, which we still have, we're still in our old five-year program, that we're looking to move forward with our 2019 program. So, these are roads that have been, you know, the back of Paul's mind, that he's known that because of issues and things, that he's knows that need to be redone. So, we're looking to go up to the neighborhood into the, Stephanie, help me out with the neighborhood, up in the Windsong, is it?
Windsong Ridge.
Windsong Ridge neighborhood. We historically do a couple neighborhoods, we've done the hunt, we did the estates, we were over in the greens, we were over at Cedar Brook Farms, so now we're going to be going up into Windsong Ridge and doing work up there on North Shady Retreat Road, Hidden Lane, Windsong Drive, Windy Run Road, and South Wind Drive. We also have a number of other roads that we're looking to do some add alternates, so we can get some competitive pricing. The more we put out there, sometimes the more better pricing we'll get, and trying to look at the road program in whole. Again, what it will be is we have $550,000 budgeted, some of that is out of the capital and then liquid fuels. So, I think it's, you know, money that we're going to try to balance, and these are the roads we're looking to, if we were to do all in totality, almost, you know, 3.7, almost 3.8 miles coming up this year to move forward with the road program. Jeff and I are working together, and as soon as, you know, with your approval, and we're going to move forward with this, we're going to get this out to bid and move ahead this year with this program. So, that's what we're looking to do. So, are there any questions on the 2019 road program or the asset management?
Nope, I don't. Anybody? Nope.
I was curious, when are we going to have this, are we going to have this published on our webpage, the roads that we're going to be working on?
Yeah, we can. What I think is, what we typically do is after we prove the bids, we post up there. Also, if there's anything that PennDOT is working on in the township this year, which I don't think they are, last year they did Pine Run Road and Ferry Road, which we post as well, so we're informing everybody of PennDOT's work, but I don't think anything is being done significantly in the township, we'll do that, both of those.
Wonderful.
The only comment I wanted to say about the asset management program in total is that hopefully you can get a flavor for it, it's going to be able to provide a lot of capability for the township, so there's a lot there. I'm encouraged by your enthusiasm, so it's a lot to take on, so go for it.
John's doing a lot of hard work, and he's out in the field, and actually, in our Public Works guy. in our Public Works guys are doing, using it too. Anybody who's trained in can, you know, and if you're interested and we'll deputize you and, and you can go out there and start.
Give you an orange penny.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. That was great. Manager, do you have anything more?
I have nothing at this point.
Supervisors, Jen, start with you.
Great. So I just want to give a little update on some of the committees that I'm liaison on. I went to the TAB meeting and one of the things that I wanted to, to express is and encourage people to do is to turn on Channel 31 or Channel 22 Verizon for 31 and Comcast 22 to watch Doylestown TV. There's a whole bunch of information on there. There's a lot of health information. There's the supervisors' meetings, but there's a lot of really interesting programming that our TAB committee works very hard on. You can also go in, on our webpage, if you go onto the information tab under the DTV schedule, you can see what's scheduled for the day and, and tune in when you're interested. They've also been working very hard at rolling out what they're going to be doing in the new building. So there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes for everything. But I'll speak on the TAB part, that there's a, a long list of items that need to be done so that, so that the transfer of, of all of this equipment is, is as seamless as possible. They've been working on website issues and of course, content, always content with that with TAB. For the EAC, we'll be hosting the Regional EAC Summit coming up, which is a huge thing for Doylestown Township. We host it. This is all that local EAC groups come together and talk about environmental issues and things that are important to our larger community. And Doylestown Township has been a leader in that. They also discussed Ready for 100, which is a program that encourages reducing and eliminating fossil fuel and going more towards renewable energy by 2035, depending on the program. And of course invasive species. They, they've been tackling invasive species throughout our park system and there's a lot of educational information when it comes to that. And Parks and Rec has been very busy looking at the options for potential community center. That has been a huge focus for them. So I wanted to let you know what has been going on in these committees. But I also wanted, in a final note, on a personal, more personal note, June is a holiday. Father's Day is coming up. It is also Pride Month. And you wonder why that's two, those are two different things that I want to bring up together. I am an advocate for LGBTQ community. And part of the reason why I'm an advocate is because my father is gay. So Father's Day to me falls into a wonderful month because I get to celebrate him being him and being the daughter of a wonderful father. And I wanted to encourage anybody that has a gay family member, somebody in the LGBTQ community, to, to speak up and be an ally because things have gotten much better over the past 30 years or so, at least in our community, but there's still a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
What does the event in Doylestown?
Doylestown Borough is having a Pride Fest at the end of June. It's June 20th to the 23rd, I believe. That's the borough running that Pride Fest and I'll probably be there.
That's really nice. Thanks. Ken?
Just a question. Did you have a date on that EAC meeting?
The symposium.
Regional, yes.
I believe it's the 17th.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. The one thing I would just wanted to mention about for the pension advisory committee, the committee last meeting had pulled out through their research four articles that are going to have copies made and placed into your bins.
Thank you.
So I would encourage you to read them prior to the next workshop meeting so you're well-versed and, or by the next one at least.
How long has that committee been around? They have been doing a great job.
This year.
Wow.
It started this year.
Wow.
And they're easy reads, but I wish I had these five years ago when I started and because they really help explain what the problem is and how to understand pensions a lot better. So it was a good work. So be prepared for that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ken?
No.
Rick?
Go to Ryan then.
Ryan?
I just have one thing. Chief touched on it, but I just want to, I saw firsthand, I actually was stuck in the center of town and when the storm kind of unloaded on Doylestown and, you know, I mean, I've never seen anything like it. The sky was literally green. I was in my car. I actually had to, the tornado warning was going off. I tried to get down to my road and there was a tree down in front of the YMCA, had just fallen. So I pulled back, I went into McCaffrey's and huddled with a few other people that had gotten stuck in there until it died down. But by the time I left McCaffrey's, which was all a half an hour, it was still pouring rain and there were Public Works guys out there already moving that tree. And that continued all through the night. So, and I know that the police were, were doing the same. And I was just so impressed. I could not believe that they were out there already just making sure that people were safe and clearing the road. So kudos to the entire township staff for acting so quickly. Again, in archaic fashion of having no communication, like electric, electric communication. So great job.
And great. Thanks. Do you have anything there?
Yeah, I, I want to give you an update on the planning commission. We had the Brooks property development come in and I think you'll be seeing that soon on your agenda. It went very well, very smooth. They knew what they were doing. They work well with the planning commission and our engineers. Couple of i's to dot and a couple of t's to cross, but I think you'll be seeing that in short order. Also on the agenda was Grasso. And since the board sent this back to the planning commission about six months ago, it's gone through a couple of iterations, shape of the building, size. And the planning commission continues to ask for better information, more clear information. One of the topics that we started to zero in on now that they had some kind of...
Grading plan.
Grading plan. Thank you. Was the height of the building and the planning commission basically said that's too high. And the, the upshot of the whole thing is Mr. Benner basically said they're going to have to go and start at ground zero, start at first square all over again, that they can't seem to please, I shouldn't say please, they can't seem to work with the planning commission and get what both parties need. And part of that is because of their sketch plan. Normally a sketch plan is a sketch and then you get more and more into development. But this sketch plan has so much more weight that, because it's part of a stipulated agreement, that we really have to make sure this sketch plan is something that's going to hold up because it, if it gets into stipulated agreement, it's basically, I'll say law, that's not the right word, but going to come to fruition. So that, that's why we keep going through still on a sketch plan with Grasso. Don't know where it's going. I, Stephanie and I and many of us have worked on this for many, 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 many years. So I won't see the end of it because I, it's not going to get done by December. So I won't see the end of where this eventually gets to, but I'll follow it closely. The other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank all the candidates that ran. We all know it's no fun running. It's a lot of hard work and a lot of effort and, and you have to have the desire to want to make for a better community. So I'd like to thank all the candidates that run, ran, win or lose. It's, it's something you should be proud of. One of the replacements is going to be on the, my replacement is going to be on the November ballot. I'm in my last six months, as I said, and after almost 10 years. But it's time for me to prepare the township for the next 10 years as best I can. Therefore, I am resigning my position as vice chair. If the board accepts it, then I will nominate Ken Snyder as vice chair. He deserves it. He earns it. We, we all mentioned what a great job he's done over, over his time and I think he's part of the future. So again, I'd like to resign as vice chair. If the board accepts it, I would like to nominate Ken Snyder as vice chair.
I'll, I'll, I mean, I, I would accept that and second that nomination for Ken.
You'd have to...
I mean, you know, Rick.
You jumped right out of the box. Rick's gone. I mean, you could have waited the little pause.
Is there a motion to accept Rick's resignation as vice chairman?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
With regret because Rick has been incredible.
He has been.
We ran together.
That's right.
And, and he's been incredible asset to this township. Is that good?
Yeah, that's, that's...
Okay.
You're, you're absolved from your quickness.
All right. Is there a second?
You did.
I seconded it? Yeah, all right. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I nominate Ken Snyder as my replacement.
Oh, wait, is there three i's?
Is there three i's?
Wait, the first one was for the resignation.
Yes.
It's four i's.
There are four i's.
I didn't vote.
All right. Now, is there a motion to appoint?
I make the motion to appoint Ken Snyder as vice chair for the remainder of the year.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Vice Chairman?
It's a big check you get. Yeah. I get that bonus now, don't I?
No nays. No nays, right? No nays. Okay. Well, excellent. Good work. I didn't see that coming.
I didn't either.
All right. Next, we're having a public hearing on the, on the Green Initiative program.
If I may, in a prior board meeting, and obviously this was the supervisor haring initiative, we spent some time working through this process with staff and supervisors. And as a result of an authorization from a prior board meeting, the proposed Green Initiative, Green Points Initiative ordinance has been duly advertised, both in the intelligencer and a copy provided to Law Library, and the purpose of which is to provide incentives to folks to use building materials and the like to save energy and to save the environment and all the other purposes that makes sense to this present-day country we live in, as well as the township. So it's ready to conduct a public hearing and if appropriate, to adopt the ordinance as provided.
All right. Board is opening up the, the hearing, opening up the hearing. Are there any questions, comments regarding the proposed ordinance? I take it all the members had a chance to review it?
Correct.
Is there anyone out there in the audience that has a question or a comment about the proposed ordinance? Hearing done? Is there a motion to approve said ordinance? I'll move to approve? Okay.
No second change.
Okay. There's a first and second? All in favor of the, a motion?
Aye.
Okay. The establishing Green Initiative program is now an ordinance of Township of Doylestown. Other business, Water Connection at Time of Property Sale, Rick Hala.
Yes, we talked briefly about this at the last meeting and there were some questions and through the sagacious writing of Stephanie and Keith, the memo went out a couple of days ago.
I read it.
Was that well done?
It was very well done.
And there were one or two questions that at least I fielded. So I think it was clear and succinct, but, so I'd like to make a motion that we have Mr. Garten draft an ordinance with the help from the board and to show, present to the board at the next board supervisors' meeting.
Maybe tougher the next meeting, I'm going to be away for a week. So if we can do it, the next meeting thereafter.
That would be in the, that would be in the new building.
Oh, appropriate.
Okay.
New Orleans, New Building.
Is there a second, just for discussion purposes only at this point?
A second to draft an ordinance. Is that what the second?
Yeah, is there a second to the drafting of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Or just for discussion purposes? I would like to have a discussion. If anybody has any comments regarding...
Well, I, I have some concerns with the ordinance and not, you know, obviously I would love to have more of a discussion. I think that there needs to be a little bit more information. What, what's being proposed is that there's an ordinance requiring the hookup of water, public water upon the sale of property, correct?
Yes.
If you have a main in front of your house. My concern is that we don't have enough information about the health of the wells in our township. There was discussion in that memo saying that there's a potential that there's arsenic, there's lead, there's PFOS. But we know the DEP has done test drilling, drilling for PFOS and maybe you would like to speak on this. But I feel, I feel like there needs to be a little bit more information in order to vote, to approve this type of thing, especially when it requires people to, to hook up. If it was voluntary, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair question. There, there just isn't a lot of data. These are private wells that are not regulated right now.
Right.
So what we are taking the position is we are a little better, more equipped to, one, detect a potential problem in our aquifer, two, treat it, and then three, notify our customers that if there is a problem, that we can make sure that, that it is corrected. With private well owners, whatever contaminants they may have, they're not going to know.
Right.
They may not spend the money to do the, the required testing. So I, I'm trying to kind of answer your question, but I, I don't know other than the localized areas within the township that have the PFOS contamination. And I think we quoted a statistic that there was maybe 20, was it 200 failed testings for bacteria?
Just for bacteria.
And that's just what we know.
Right. That's for, for our cycle testing, the ECOI.
And I think, you know, one of the things the board probably wants to take into consideration is the fact that over the years, we've had areas in the township that have had TCE, MTBE, the PFO, PFOS. And then there's a whole slew of private wells that, you know, they're, they have public sewers, so they're not even testing or have to test under the program for even fecal coliform, which you have to do if you have the onlot system with the well. So, you know, the private wells, it's just kind of up to each individual to determine what's going on with their well.
Keith, does this, oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Keith, does this requiring, you know, hookups, does that help the health of the water provided by DTMA in general? Does that help it? Are you improving the quality or maintaining, you know, the safety of the water if you've got more wells down and more well?
No, I don't think it's improved, I don't think it's improving our aquifer. No.
So it's a Big Brother thing?
Well, I think one of the, one of the things Keith and I talked about today.
I don't know about that.
Yeah. What we talked about was, should we develop a strategy for public water within the township? Today, when we find a problem area, we react and we fix it. And that's the strategy, is fixing as it happens. Should we be a little bit more proactive and say, well, in 10 years, this densely populated area probably may get contaminated, maybe not, but should we be a little bit more proactive and develop any value or try to come up with a strategy on how we want to approach it? And we both struggled with the, what is the right answer there?
Right.
And not, you know, attacking it as a problem comes up, that's a strategy. And that if, but we've never really said that.
Yes, there's something in between requiring everyone to hook up and ad hoc responses.
Exactly.
And this is like the first small step in that...
This is huge step.
Well, it's only 300, it's, no, no, it's only 300 homes.
To those 300 homes though, that's $9,000 each home.
At the time of a sale. At the time of a sale.
It's still $9,000.
Somebody's going to pay for that.
But I look at it from this perspective, the idea that it's at the time of sale versus we're coming to them and saying, boom, you owe us $9,000. There's a, there's a much different transaction of money when it's 9,000 incorporated into the sale versus what we're, what we're, some of the things we're having to do. I think this is all, I mean, I think we're all on the same page that we're looking for our township to be primarily public water. That's, I mean, that's what we're doing. I mean, that's the best thing for our township. And if we can find instances like this where, I mean, I think this is conservative and again, what Ken said, part of a strategy of how we start working into moving over to public water for all of our residents, you know?
Do the 300 homes or however many know that this is in consideration? Have they been told?
No, no. We haven't advertised, we haven't placed it. That's something we can certainly place on the website.
If we're starting.
This is the first communication of it.
I think they should now let them have an input into it.
Sure, yeah.
And it's, it's not a binary decision. There's, you know, it's not either we force them to do it now or we do it at the time of sale. We could consider other options. I mean, there's, we could just say no to all of it. So there are other options between, between that.
Sure, you can say no.
Even though it is a softer blow.
Other townships have chosen to have mandatory required connections.
Right.
Their ordinance says we can require it at any time. So I think we're kind of taking the step where we're cognizant of the money that needs to be, you know, spent and upgraded. And I think if, I did the math this morning, it was maybe 2% of what the average home value is in Doylestown, so.
So it's our decision, but I would still like to have input from those 300, please, homes. Just, I think that's fair.
Just have a public meeting on the topic in a new building before you start adopting ordinances makes sense.
And that doesn't mean water connection at the time of property sale if they choose to say, oh, this is going to be an ordinance, well, let's do it now. I mean, you can do it anytime.
Yeah, you can do it anytime.
Right, right. You could do it before.
Do it now.
All right. Now or at the time of sale? All right. Well, so you're going to, so there's a motion and a second to draft.
I think there was just a motion.
There was a second, but for discussion purpose only, but now we can make it into a real second. So you accept that as a real second?
Yes.
All right. So it's a real second now as opposed to a discussion second. And don't laugh at me. I'm not sure not to show anymore.
I'm not laughing at Ken, that's all.
Okay.
Not even Barbara, don't be talking personally. You know I wouldn't do that.
Any other, any other questions, comments, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, there's one nay. And you're going to draft something and then we'll have a discussion.
Yeah, we'll advertise it, I'll just draft something, no advertising.
But I think for that, when do we want to have the folks noticed?
I would suspect you're going to have, if you have 300 people, you better do it in the big building.
No, no, but you're going to draft something, but no advertising.
I'm not going to advertise it.
So at that meeting when we consider your draft, maybe the people should be there?
Right, I would think you should.
Okay. All right, that's a good timing then. All right. So you could just send them a note. I think it's just a real quick notice that we're considering.
It's about approximately 300 people are the quantity of the homes that are on the streets that were listed in the memo.
Yes, exactly.
Those were major roads that I know public water was down, so.
Okay. Thanks Keith.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick. Did we, are you done with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, new business. We're going to auction some vehicles.
Yes. You have a 2012 Chevy Tahoe with 135,000 miles plus on it.
So motion to send it?
Motion to send.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Acknowledgement of the 2019 equipment vehicle lease process and results, see attached. Everyone took a look at that stuff?
Yes. It was nice to see it.
All right.
Not that I had any doubt that we weren't doing a thorough job, it was nice to see it.
All right. Do we need any action on that?
Motion to accept.
We need a motion to accept the 2019 equipment vehicle lease. I can't find it, that's why I'm looking.
Make a motion to accept.
Can't find whatever I'm supposed to be looking on here. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, there it is. Stuck to a clip. And then the next item is the Woodridge, Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Project Payment Request from Bucks County Water Sewer Authority Number Three. Letter from Mr. Maticola. Anyone see that?
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion to pay that request? Payment request number three.
Make a motion, we pay the press number three.
All right, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item is the 2018 Tax Collector Audit Engagement Letters for the Audit of 2018.
Right, and from time to time, our auditors, Major and Mastro, when doing the township audit, will look at different areas and feel that they need to delve in a little further. And they've done these in the past and this time they're suggesting that we run an audit, small audit on the tax collector for the 2018 year. And recommend that Ken and Wallace, our Township Finance Director and I, would recommend that we engage Major and Mastro to conduct that audit for, on behalf of the township.
Okay, agreed. Is there a motion to approve Major Mastro on this narrowing audit?
I have a question. How frequently do we typically have audits? When was the last audit that was done for tax collector?
For tax collector.
For tax collector.
I know there was one done with, when Carol Scarborough was the tax collector.
So it's been a while.
So periodically.
Okay.
You know, if they see things they want to kind of delve a little deeper on.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is a zoning hearing board application for Dietzel 97 Willow Lane. I didn't understand this. I tried to understand.
It's an in-law suite.
But is it an existing structure or not?
It's an existing structure. Yeah, it's an existing structure. It's actually the old farmhouse that's in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge area.
Thanks for clarifying.
It's a big property, yeah. Kind of interesting, they have some really cool old pictures of the property.